Want to call to order the March 4th City Council Meeting of City Seabrook. Please rise for the pledge.
I would like to read this to the Texas state, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item 1.1, Public Comments and Announcements. At this time, we'd like to listen to any member of the audience on any of this, on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes. For each speech, speakers shall be limited to city business or city-related business or matters of general public interest and should not include any personal attacks. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, members may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly into the microphone before making your comments. Tyler Kabina.
All right, good evening. My name is Tyler Kabina. I live at 1801 Elmar Lane in Miramar, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here as both a citizen of Seabrook and a candidate for City Council Position 1. One of the biggest lessons I've learned as I've engaged more in city matters is that being proactive matters, especially when it comes to zoning and land use. Too often, we don't think about zoning until after a business or development is already in motion, but by the time land is bought, permits are filed, and projects begin, it's too late to voice concerns or request changes. Property owners have the right to develop land based on its zoning, and once that process is underway, our opinions, whether in support or opposition, have far less impact. This is why it's critical for us as citizens, including myself, to stay informed about the zoning of areas that have not yet been built on. If we want to shape the future of Seabrook, we need to take an active role before the for sale signs go up, not after. It's our responsibility to understand the plans that are already in place, engage in discussions about land use, and contribute to the vision of Seabrook's undeveloped areas. And here's the thing, many people have already been proactive. The master plan, the comprehensive land use plan, the mobility plan, and other studies and projects have been developed with input from residents, city staff, current council and past councils. These plans exist for a reason, to provide a framework for growth that balances economic development, quality of life, and of course, the unique character of Seabrook. For example, the waterfront resiliency plan was developed to address flood mitigation and environmental sustainability while ensuring that Seabrook's waterfront remains an asset for future generations. The 146 corridor study was conducted to help us understand how transportation and business growth along the highway will impact our daily lives. And my personal favorite, and I'm sure it's a favorite for other people out there, the old Seabrook. The old Seabrook plan and revitalization efforts have been aimed at preserving the charm of our historic areas while creating new opportunities for businesses and residents. These aren't random last-minute decisions. They are part of a broader, long-term strategy that has been shaped by Seabrook residents, both past and present. If we want to have a say in the future of Seabrook, we must participate in these discussions before decisions are made, not just react to them after the fact. That means reading the master plan, attending public meetings, and ask questions about areas that are still open for development. It also means working collaboratively to ensure that the vision we have for Seabrook is reflected in the decisions that guide our growth. But I also want to take a moment to recognize and respect those who have already taken the time to engage in those conversations. There are many. Whether you're speaking at a meeting, serving on a committee, you're on council now, or a council candidate currently, or simply if you're one of those who just wants to stay informed, your involvement matters. Progress doesn't happen in isolation. It happens when people show up, share ideas, and work towards solutions together. And at the end of the day, Seabrook's future will be shaped by those who take the time to be proactive. We have the opportunity and furthermore, the responsibility to help guide that future by understanding the plans already in place, staying engaged, and ensuring that our city continues to grow in a way that benefits both current and of course, future residents. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tyler. Jennifer Pitts.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Pitts, and I own Genuine Treasures at 902 Hardesty in Old Seabrook. And I'm here today for two reasons. The first refers to the signage for Old Seabrook. At the last council meeting, the topic was discussed, and one of the questions raised was, why should Old Seabrook businesses get signage when other businesses in Seabrook would not? I can answer that in one word: bypass. Years ago, as the construction on 146 began, we were promised signage to help navigate the road closures and detours. That did not happen. A few years later, a group of us came to the city with an idea for signage and a willingness to help even pay for it, and again, it seemed to fall on deaf ears. Now you're discussing it again. So why does Old Seabrook need signage so badly? Because a bypass was built around us. Other businesses have not dealt with five-plus years of disruption like we have. Other areas have not been asking for assistance from the city like we have, and quite frankly, we are desperate for help. I recently spoke with a couple of councilmen and told them that many of us feel like the stepchild of the city. We are forgotten. We've lost customers because it was too difficult to reach us. We continue to lose potential customers because they literally drive right over us. And honestly, when was the last time any of you visited any of these businesses in Old Seabrook? I can personally say I have not seen anyone from city council or city management stop in the boutique in years. That brings me to the other reason I'm here. By the grace of God, Genuine Treasures is celebrating its fifth year in business. Our celebration is this Thursday, March 6th. The reception will begin at 2:30 and the official presentation at 3:30. I wanted to personally invite all of you and hope you will be able to stop by. Also, on Saturday, March 8th, we will have our first craft market of the year. Unbeknownst to many, we have held monthly craft markets for the last four and a half years. Even after presentations to the EDC and city council to get the ordinance changed for the property, many are still surprised. So again, I invite you to stop by this Saturday and every second Saturday to visit with our vendors and our customers. Your presence or lack of carries a lot of weight with the community. I hope you will accept both invitations and consider the importance of signage in our area. Together, we can bring life back into Old Seabrook. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. JP Byers.
How are you guys doing today? In front of each of you, I gave you all a packet. I'm thrifty like that, try to make things cool. So, to start off with, we're going to talk about the $50,000 for the owner of the Floppy Pets Building, Seabrook Retail LLC. One of the things before we start talking about this, and I talked to Tom about it a little bit beforehand, and I've talked about it many other times with other people. The problem is, and I don't want to sound condemning, but like she just said, a lot of people here don't go to the stores that are here and around us. So if anybody is willing to give Floppy Pets owner $50,000 for fixing up their facade has never been inside that building. Now, I know that it's not a $50,000 check. I know they've got to meet certain parameters. I understand how this works. But at the same time, if you look at these buildings that I've shown you, this is three of the locations here in Houston, not including both Floppy Pets and the Viola and Magnus Building. You will see that every single building that they own is rundown and in horrible, in horrible condition. If you open up to the next couple of pages, you will find that this is only one page of the 87 buildings in the city, I'm sorry, in the state of Texas that they own. And while I don't have addresses for every single one, I am almost guaranteed that if you were to actually go and do the research and find them, that you will see that this is not some crazy needle in a haystack. This is a slumlord that doesn't deserve our time and effort unless, of course, we're talking about our Board of Ordinances and sending the police and fining them out of business so that somebody that actually wants that building can buy it and take care of it so that our city can actually use it and thrive. Second part of what I'm talking about today is going to be the new IDA, the Industrial District Agreement. I haven't had enough time to really dig through this one very much, but after digging for just a short period of time, I was very, very frustrated and angry that I had to dig it all for the fact that the IDA is for a new flyover from 146 to a new port entry. We're literally talking about the fact that 146 has brought in new noise to Lake Cove and all the surrounding areas just by itself. And when I talk about a flyover, for anybody that doesn't understand what I'm talking about, I'm talking about the entrance into Bayport from 146 onto Port Road and off of Port Road onto 146 headed towards La Porte. They're about to put another set of those right next to Red Bluff. It will not be on Red Bluff, so don't worry about that. It will land on port property. But having trucks all day and all night, 125 feet in the air, is going to cause way more noise than a 20- or 40-foot berm is ever going to stop. At what point that anybody who is actually helping to negotiate the terms of this thinks that $4 million in value over the next 15 years is anywhere near close to the amount of value that the people in the Mystic Village, Seaside, Seaside, those areas are going to lose in their homes based on the noise of that area? If you want to see what port noise does to a community, it's not like you got to drive for. Go to Clear Lake Shores. Sorry, Clear Lake Shores, Shore Acres, I apologize. Get onto Shore Acres and find that all those little homes, very few of them in great condition, and that's exactly what we're inviting here, and this $4 million is nowhere near enough to compensate the people of this city. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Marissa Levitt.
I'm a little short. Okay, can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, I'm Marissa Levitt. I live in Lake Point Forest. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and fellow residents. I'm here tonight to discuss the $4 million disannexation deal with the Port of Houston, a deal that raises major financial red flags, serious concerns, and unanswered questions, and that must be addressed before any vote takes place. The Port of Houston is taking UTZ's land out of Seabrook's city limits. In exchange, the port is paying the city $4 million as a one-time payout. At face value, this sounds simple, but when you look deeper into the numbers, this deal is not structured in Seabrook's best interest. There are three major financial concerns that need to be addressed. The $503,125 Pine Gully Settlement payment, how will it be used? Who controls it? It must be ironclad. The $1.6 million payout stretched over 15 years, why structure it this way? Who benefits? The unresolved issues surrounding UTZ, does the port even own the land? Are we legally able to sign this deal yet? The UTZ land questions must be answered. Before we even talk about the money, can we legally enter into this contract? Who currently owns the land? HCAD records still show UTZ as the owner. If the port does not yet own the land, can we legally enter this deal? UTZ is currently into two active lawsuits, one with the port, the same entity we're trying to make a deal with, and one with Seabrook for unpaid back taxes. What happens if we sign this deal today? Who is responsible for the back taxes? Is there a clause in this deal, excuse me, ensuring the port covers the unpaid taxes, or is Seabrook still stuck chasing UTZ for them? If UTZ dissolves, does Seabrook lose its ability to collect what's owed? The timing of the formation of the two UTZ LLCs is highly suspect. Were these LLCs created with this deal in mind? Was this structured intentionally to avoid certain liabilities? What other LLCs and trusts own land in this area? Are there more undisclosed parties involved in this deal? Has anyone checked to see if these LLCs are connected to any city officials, developers, or others with an interest in this deal? Counsel, you need to get these questions answered before even considering a vote tonight. The Pine Gully Settlement, the money must be locked down. Number one, why is the Port of Houston paying Seabrook $503,125 for Pine Gully? In 2009, Seabrook issued $2.5 million in bonds to fund Pine Gully's park expansion. This project was fully funded more than a decade ago. No lawsuits, no new agreements, and no disputes justify this payment. So why is the port suddenly handing Seabrook an extra 503K? Where did this number come from? What is the legal justification for this payment? Why was this amount inserted into the deal with no public explanation? Number two, the use of this money must be ironclad and enforceable. This money must be strictly controlled. It cannot become a discretionary slush fund. Every dollar must be locked into Pine Gully-related infrastructure or public projects. The council must mandate that it cannot be reallocated later without public approval. There must be an enforceable legally binding mechanism in place to prevent misuse. Even stranger, the head of Carruthers, who I hear has been quite busy lately, is already jokingly asking the city to consider shifting this money away before the ink is even dry. This money needs to be locked down now before it quietly disappears. The $1.6 million slow payout over 15 years, who benefits? Instead of paying Seabrook upfront, the port will pay out $1.6 million over 15 years. This means the city is leaving at least $1 to $3 million on the table due to lost investment returns. Why would the city agree to this structure? The only logical reason to stretch payments out like this is to give those managing the funds more control over when and how the money is used. A lump sum payment would ensure Seabrook gets full value. The trickle of, this trickle of money over 15 years benefits someone, but not the taxpayers. This makes it harder for residents to track where the money actually goes over time. Possible reasons for this structure. A slow trickle of money allows for more control over discretionary spending. By spreading the payments out, the city avoids public scrutiny of a large lump sum. It gives insiders more control over when and how the money is used. There is no financial justification for this structure, only political and operational advantages for those managing the funds. Before finalizing this agreement, the city must get a legal determination on whether we can enter this contract if the port does not yet own the land. Ensure back taxes will be covered. Who is responsible, UTZ or the port? Mandate that Pine Gully settlement funds can only be used for infrastructure or specific public projects with no loopholes for reallocation. Implement strict financial controls to ensure this money cannot be moved to discretionary spending and renegotiate for a lump sum payment instead of spreading out $1.6 million over 15 years. If these issues are not addressed, this deal is a financial trap for Seabrook payers. Seabrook has one chance to negotiate this deal properly. If we rush it through, we risk entering into an agreement that may not be legally valid, losing our ability to collect back taxes if UTZ dissolves, a Pine Gully payment that can be quietly redirected with no accountability, agreeing to a payment structure that benefits insiders over taxpayers, and leaving up to three, excuse me, million dollars on the table with flawed 15-year payment structure. Counsel, if you approve this deal as is, you are handing over financial control to insiders and leaving taxpayer dollars exposed to misuse. This deal needs a serious rewrite. Put this deal on hold until it's fixed. Thank you.
Item 1.1, Mayor, City Council, and our members of the city staff may make announcements about city-community events.
All right. Good evening, everyone. This Thursday, March 6th, is the anniversary celebration at Genuine Treasures. As we heard a few minutes ago, she's stayed open for five years. That's a significant milestone. Stop by there that afternoon. Daylight saving time begins Sunday, March 9th. Turn your clocks ahead an hour, and don't forget to check the batteries in your smoke detectors. Seabrook Lucky Trails is coming up. It is March 14 to 16 at Rex Mader Park. For more information, you can visit seabrookluckytrails.com. That's always a fun event. I used to run it, too. Crafts with a Cop on March 21st, from 10 to 11 at Mater Branch Library. I'm sure they'll have something fun. Trash Bash is coming up, March 29th. You can park for the event, and you can register for the event at James Bay Elementary, 8:30 a.m. to 9 a.m. Cleanup goes from 9 to 11. Always an interesting day as well. Now, this is kind of exciting here. The Monroe Field Splash Pad opens Tuesday, April 1st. The splash pad is, will be open Tuesday to Sunday from 9:00 in the morning to 8:30 at night, but closed every Monday. My grandkids will be happy to hear that. You may have heard there is an election coming up. Last day to register for that election is Thursday, April 3rd. For more information, go to seabrooktx.gov/elections. And because our police force stays pretty busy, there's also Coffee with a Cop on Friday, April 4th, 9 to 10:30 at Beacon Federal Credit Union, not too far from here. And the Seabrook Trail Adventure, Saturday, April 5th, from 9 to 11. That gets underway at Hester Garden Park. That should be fun as well. Is there anything I've missed?
Little League Parade.
Yeah, the parade, the Bayside Parade is March 29th also.
Parade is March 29th? So the Little League Parade, don't know exactly where it's going to start from right now. There's been some discussion about that, but it's going to be March 29th sometime in the morning.
First, United Methodist Church, I believe. Or is it Methodist or Baptist? Anyway.
Right off 146.
Yeah, it's not far.
Anyone else? 2.0 Presentations. 2.1 Presentation of the Public Safety Annual Report for 2024, of 2024. Is that right? Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Council, good evening. I'd like to present to you your 2024 annual report for the Police Department activities. I'm going to move through it rather quickly, but if you have questions, please feel free to stop me at any point, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. I believe you all got a binder, correct? Great. If you could advance, please. Wait, go back one, please. I did flatten the organizational chart just a little bit to increase supervision on night shift. We had a little too many on days, and we had some gaps on night, so by flattening that, we've got plenty of coverage with supervisors on all shifts in all areas. The call volume this past year was up about 2,000. That's quite a few calls. About 2,200 of them were in the Police Department. There were upticks all the way across in fire and EMS. The only downtick was in animal control. They did have about a 300 call reduction over 2024. The crash totals are looking good over the three years, the past three years. They've continued to trend down. I just looked at the 10-year numbers, and this is the lowest, 2024 was the lowest number of crashes we've had in the last decade. So that's good news. Part of that is attributed to 146 opening up, but after it opened, we did have a spike at our two major intersections, NASA and Repsdorf. After we looked at some timing issues with the lights and the sequencing, got with Tex Dot, they smoothed that out. If you could scroll down, I believe it's on that same slide. The first quarter of 2024, there were 35 crashes between those two intersections. The last three quarters of the year, there were 19. So it was a dramatic drop in crashes. Our enforcement activity has stayed pretty consistent. Most of it is warning citations. We want to educate the motoring community, but they're, that's, both citations and the warnings are pretty consistent. Animal control, I did mention that we had a downturn in calls. Our illegal camping and homeless, we have seen a decline, which is good. We want to try to rehome everyone that we can that's not in proper housing because it's not only dangerous for them, it's illegal. So we continue to work on that, and we're making strides in the positive direction. Our Criminal Investigations Division did a great job. They're at a very respectable 72% of clearance rate for all cases. If you noticed, there was a spike in cases. Part of that, a large part of it, is because we're going to a new reporting system. So our software is changing, and some of the legacy reports that we had, I need to get uploaded into the new system. The only way to do that is to create a record in the current system that's about to be antiquated. So. Our grants, we had a lot of grants that we applied for and received in 2024 totaling about $140,000, almost $141,000. The biggest are our protective gear for our officers, ballistic helmets and vests, and also a grant for accreditation, which I'll talk about in a moment. Our training, we hit all the state marks that they mandate, so we got everything done that the state requires us to do for all of our personnel, and we also increased our training hours by about 50%, just, just short of 50%. Our staffing, we had a few retirements, and in a small agency, a couple of retirements is a big deal. So we lost, we started out the year with one vacancy, we ended with five, just after the first of the Just after the first of the year, we hired one. We're about to hire another next week. So we'll, we'll get those spots filled, but it also went to a promotion for a couple of guys to sergeant. So you guys will see that very soon. The accreditation process I mentioned earlier, it started about 20, almost 20 years ago. It's a Texas best practices accreditation process. They look at 170 standards that they want a police department to follow. Those are just best practices in everything from policies to evidence room to the way we conduct our, our call responses. There are about 180 agencies that are certified in this accreditation program across the state and we will soon be one of them. We started in the end of '24, so in December, and our projected accreditation date is mid-2026, but the bulk of the work will be done this year. And these are some of the goals, some of the marks that we hit in 2024, as well as some of the goals that we're going to strive for in 2025. We had a couple of active attack exercises in '24. I want to do at least two more this year. Our technology advancements, we deployed a lot of new handheld radios that give us much better coverage. A lot of new hardware in the cars, body cameras that you heard about last year. All of those things have helped us manage our time a lot better because we're not spending a lot of time searching for videos to get to the district attorney's office and things like that. It's a lot easier, smoother process now. Traffic safety, we reduced our crashes about 6% over '24. I want to take it down another 10% in '25 and I think that's completely achievable. Emergency dispatch center, we're in the process of getting new equipment for the dispatchers to reduce some of the downtime of the radio consoles. Meanwhile, the dispatchers are hitting 99%, which is the gold standard in 911 communications for answering 911 calls for service. So they're, they're doing a phenomenal job and it's, they measure the time it takes to hit, to answer those calls. So they're, they're doing great. As I mentioned about accreditation, I anticipate the bulk of that work will be done this year, but we will get accredited in 2026. And finally, through the public safety program, our fund program, asked for and was granted money for drones. We spend a lot of time searching for people in wooded areas, both missing and suspects. These drones will help us and the fire department. If they need to look for a cool spot in a structured fire, we can help them with a drone. Or if we're out in a field, we don't have to tie up a whole lot of officers searching a field. We can put a drone up, look for a heat signature in the woods and either find the person or conclude that they're not there any longer and clear the scene. So just another way to speed up our response to the community and clear ourselves from that call so that we can take something else. Any questions?
Any questions? Go ahead.
The Commercial Division, how, how is it going? It seems like we had a lot more activity in '23 instead of '24.
'24, both of the people promoted out of that program. And the program takes about three and a half, four months to just train them. So they're in Austin. We just got one back after three months of training in Austin. And if you've noticed, he's stopping trucks, he's probably getting 20 trucks a day that he's pulling over and doing inspections on. So that's one position filled. As soon as I can fill the second one, I'm going to fill that, send him to training, and then we'll have two out on the road again.
Where do you find that the biggest issue is? Is that Red Bluff and 146?
He's getting them all, he's getting them all over, but there's more traffic, more truck traffic at Red Bluff and 146 than anywhere else. I mean, as far as a concentrated intersection.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Where, who's applying for the grants? Do you have, are you doing that or is that?
I'm doing that.
Okay. So, okay. And then?
Did, did you see my eye twitch?
I sure did. It'd be nice to get some distance with that, I'm sure. And then you were talking about the commercial trucks. We don't have scales or anything?
We do have scales, yes.
Oh, we do?
Yes, we do.
All right, cool. Thank you. I appreciate everything y'all do.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
2.2 Presentation Regarding the Rebuilding of the Seabrook Boat Ramp by Texas Department of Transportation. David? David Ballard?
I'm, I'm not sure. I guess we got a little drawing, some presentation stuff, but I thought it was kind of more questions if y'all had questions about it, but, you know. I could explain it to you, or Nico Kanny's the designer. So I don't know if we just wanted to take questions or?
Well, I was the one that put this on the agenda, so. Questions, one, are we going to get it? Where's it actually going to be? The people are asking a lot of questions, like when is it coming? And how far along are we? So those are some of the questions right there.
I can answer some of the questions. Good evening, I'm Nico Kalos with LJ Engineering, the design consultant for Text Dot. The design is complete. The plans are complete. We've turned them into Text Dot for review. They've given me a few comments, which we're addressing. They're really not much to do with y'all's boat ramp. It has to do with some fendering and stuff that we need to take care of. So as far as the design, it's, it's done. And I have two roll plots I can share and put up here on the tables and you guys can look at them. The boat ramp is going to be located right on Clear Creek Channel, just west of the new bridge. There's going to be a small parking area underneath the new bridge. It'll be what I would call a two-lane boat ramp. There's not going to be any piers in the middle. There'll be two piers on the side, all timber. There's going to be a new access road that will be built to the north and south on the old railroad berm, if you're familiar with that area. So it will be wide enough for two lanes of traffic, plus we will have a sidewalk on the east side. And that was something that we had talked about with the city manager, Gail, and, and the mayor to try to give you guys some connectivity for some future expansion and some trails and stuff like that. So you guys could tie into that for some runners and stuff like that, so. And there'll be a parking area. I tried to give you all as much parking as I possibly could. It's very difficult to find space with the new bridge, piers being there. So we, we did our best to try to make it as easy to launch a boat, park. But the parking is a lot less than what y'all had before. It's just a part of the, you know, that new bridge taking up so much space. So as far as when, David, I don't know if you have an update there?
Yeah, I mean, right now, the city of Seabrook and KEMA is a combined project. So they're, they're not going to let until September of '26. So then typically it takes about 90 days after that to start construction. So you're probably looking at, um, January, 2026 before construction starts.
Okay, we want the Seabrook one to start before the city on the other side of the bridge. So do you know how many parking spots for boats? Because this is for the, the truck, the trailer and all that to?
That's correct.
Okay.
If you give me a second, I'll count.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm a little confused about why they're, why they're going to let it with KEMA? Why?
Well, it's permitting. The permitting is taking a while. You know, we're trying to get permitting for both. Actually, KEMA's permitting is ahead of this one. And then so once everything was put together, we decided just to put it as one CSJ. So that way, one contractor will come in at one time instead of trying to do it two times, you know.
So there's 11 truck and trailer spots with another, like a dozen just for vehicles. And David, I'll just add on to what you said. So KEMA actually might be a little more upset than you guys that they've been combined because y'all are getting a brand-new ramp. Because y'all's, the old ramp is totally gone. I mean, where, where it was has been completely filled in. KEMA's ramp, we're just kind of rehabbing. We're just going to clean it up and deepen their channel. So there's a lot less work for them. We were trying to work through the permitting a little bit to try to help them go a little bit faster, but like David said, the way it worked out with the Corps, the Army Corps, it just made sense to lump them. So actually, y'all's really has not slowed down at all. So KEMA might be a little upset with me, but anyway. So there's two roll plots here. I'll spread them out on the table. Y'all feel free to look at it and I'll leave my card there. If anyone has any questions, feel free to email, call me.
Anybody else? Any questions?
Okay, then my last question is, and you guys might not be able to answer this, but, you know, this project started in 2019, so we lost the boat ramps then, in January of 2019. So then we go through the whole build process. The build process has been done, so I'm trying to figure, and, and the whole time, we've been saying, we're getting a boat ramp, right? We're getting the boat ramp. So now I'm trying to figure out, like, now you're saying possibly January of 2027. So I'm, I'm confused at why, you, you, you guys knew if you're Text Dot that the bridge would be done, so then why the delay, like, for at least a couple of years? I'm a little confused on that.
It was approvals. It, it, to be honest with you, straight up, Text Dot in the beginning says, we're not even going to put the boat ramps back. Issue that became more into the district area. And then the district engineer at the time decided to go ahead and give the boat ramps back. So it took a little bit, you know, because we weren't anticipating putting the boat ramps back in. And then once you do decide, even if I would have had everything ducks in a row, we wouldn't have started construction probably until this summer. So I, I know it would have been a little faster, but it was all about approvals and getting things allotted, money, funding, you know, you know the deal, funding's tough to get sometimes.
Oh, and you're answering that question for the citizens who've asked me. So you just answered it. That, you know, but they'll understand. They're not going to like it, but they'll have to understand. I mean, it's just?
Well, yeah, I mean, no one likes to have to wait on anything, but it's, it's the nature of the beast when you're talking about taxpayer money. You've got to make sure that it's, you know, accountable, it's there, it's, you know, you can get it. And then once it's allotted, it takes a little bit to do the design and then get everything in place. And then we got to let and, you know, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot of work. It's not like Text Dot's sitting on their hands doing nothing. It's, it's a big, it's a big machine, you know, it's a big wheel. And sometimes it takes a minute to get that wheel moving.
Also, because we had to basically relocate your ramp, the way the Army Corps views that is a completely new facility. And that's a straight-up two-year permitting process. From after the design, it's kind of got to 60%. So that's another reason that takes a long time. You know, the plans have been done for about four months, but we're, you know, we had already started the permitting process back last year, so it just takes a long time with them and it's just part of doing business with them.
You know, and, and the budget is roughly $4 million, I think?
Yep.
For, for this, this, just the Seabrook side?
That's, that's correct.
So, you know, $4 million, it's not easy to get.
Anybody else?
Thanks, guys. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
3.0 The Consent Agenda. 3.1 Approve the Minutes of the July 11th, 2017 and February 18th, 2025 City Council Meetings.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. 4.0 Specific Public Hearing. 4.1 Conduct a Public Hearing on a Request for Approval of Amendments to the World Class Freezer Facility Planned Unit Development. Gail?
Mayor, Council, we have with us interim Mary Chambers. She'll be presenting on behalf of staff. We also have the developer present in the audience as well. So we will have the report from, this is Mary Chambers. You haven't had the opportunity to meet with her.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mary Chambers. I'm with Marsh Darcy Partners and I'll be presenting this report at the request for the amendment to the World Class Freezer Facility Planned Unit Development. You're familiar with the location of this project?
Yes.
As it was approved. As you can see, the project is Zoned C2. It's directly across from the port project that's zoned light industrial. In the comprehensive plan for the city of Seabrook, this property is zoned, is also shown as a land use of light industrial for warehouses. This supports the highest and best use for this property at this time. What you're considering tonight is just an amendment to the planned unit development that was previously approved August 6, 2024. That planned unit development is vested, so you're only looking at tonight approving the amendments to the site plan. At that original approved, at that original approval in August of 2024, the Planning Commission, as well as the City Council, approved an eight-foot wall, masonry of concrete to be constructed as a buffer. The action that's being requested tonight is to set the recommendation from the Planning and zoning commission. The proposed amendment includes several key changes to the original development plan. First, the size of the warehouse itself has decreased from 134,632 square feet to 72,000 square feet with the revised capabilities of serving 10 individual businesses. Additionally, the, the site layout for the warehouse itself has moved. It's shifted more to the boundary, the northern boundary of the property, whereas before it was centrally located. So let me pull that up so that you can see that. That was the original rendering of the property. You see the size of, of the warehouse there and the, how it's adjacent to the hotel property. As you can see, the new site rendering, the warehouse size has decreased. They're providing also a detention pond and still providing the eight-foot wall that will provide the additional buffer from the adjacent property. You have the tractor trailers. You have parking for those as well. With the new improvements, you're going to have an ingress and egress on this corner here instead of everything going out to 146. And then you have also an entrance here. Most of the traffic is going to be coming from North 146. So that will be the 18-wheeler trailer tractor trucks that will be bringing the product into this warehouse. Because this is a point-of-distribution warehouse, smaller trucks will be taking it out of the area. The ingress egress also ties in with the work that the port plans to do on Red Bluff. I'm making sure that I'm giving you all of the information that you need to make your decision tonight. The Planning Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission at their January 30th meeting recommended unanimous consent approval of the proposed amendments for the World Class Freezer Facility Planned Unit Development. And this is their report to you tonight, that you also accept their recommendation. Also in the audience tonight is the representative for World Class Freezer. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, Council?
Sure.
So there was some concern on the original freezer about the ammonia freezer apparatus. Can you tell us just a little bit about the safety aspects of that?
Thank you, Mary. As a reminder, my name's Ken Jackson. I own a development company called Camfield Partners, located in Irvine, California. So thanks for having us back. I got to enjoy a nice lunch with my wife and her favorite aunt out in Winnie from Tijuana. So I am raring to go. Regarding the refrigeration system, it's probably best that I compare the prior version to this. The larger facility was also much taller and it actually held over 17,000 pallets worth of product. The new plan is significantly smaller and shorter and collectively will hold just under 5,000 pallets. So it's just a little bit less than a third. In a larger facility, the refrigeration is what is still going to be ammonia. That facility probably would have held probably about 7,000 pounds of, of ammonia in a closed-loop system. The federal limits for OSHA and the Texas limits for OSHA for having a project's safety maintenance plan in place is 10,000 pounds. So regardless of what we did, we're well under both state and federal limits. However, the new design breaks that refrigeration system up. And Mary, how do I do this? Now, this is, this is probably best. So this facility is designed for 10 tenancies. Each of the two tenants, you'll see a box on top of the loading dock roof. And within that box is a refrigeration system that's designed to service both. Each tenancy will hold probably 200 to 225 pounds of ammonia, so the, the combination is 500 each and there are five of them. So we're at about 2,500 pounds of ammonia. Ammonia has been the refrigerant of choice for well over 100 years. It is environmentally It is environmentally considered extremely safe. I'm not, I'm not saying anything about human interaction, but environmentally, it does not degrade the ozone layer. It's one of the few refrigerants that has zero impact on our global warming potential. There's actually a calculation for that. In addition, this is a closed-loop system. There is nothing that circulates outside, and it has been, well, I would say if you ate food today, it probably came through a facility that was refrigerated with ammonia. The only other two that are prevalent within commercial applications, the first is an R-22 classification. You may recognize that by its trade name of Freon. In many states, that is actually being outlawed, and it's becoming impossible to get. The alternative is a system that's unproven, and I proved that myself with a facility in Utah recently, and that's a carbon dioxide system. It has benefits. It also has horrific consequences if it doesn't function properly, especially for the people who are maintaining that equipment. And so it also fails to function well in warm, humid climates. So there's really only one refrigerant that you can have to refrigerate product, and that is ammonia, and it's been around forever, and its incidence of, of security or safety within this use is almost negligible.
Any questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wants to come and speak against or for this project? Please come up. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
On each of the cooling units, are they standalone units?
Yes, each of the two, in the, in each box that's on top of the roof, those are standalone. So there's five separate systems. They are not interconnected, they are not cumulative.
Okay.
So a maintenance issue in one is not a problem with the rest. I also want to let you know, the ultimate owner and operator of this facility is known within the industry as having designed, built the most efficient, safest cold storages in the history of the United States. His company previously did some really spectacular facilities with a spectacular track record. And even though by state and federal law, a project safety maintenance program is only required above 10,000 pounds, this facility will have its own PSM, and that is important for all of us who may not actually be here every day to, to be able to manage that program. So it's going to be maintained by a first-class refrigeration service contractor that will be based right here, and they will be responsible for making sure that everything goes exactly as it's needed.
I do like the footprint, the smaller footprint of this better personally, but what is the reasoning that you went this route, and do you have plans in the future to expand this more?
It's your fault. I'm kidding. So not only did some economic reasons trigger this, but there's also an alternate site that we have for the larger version that may be better equipped for the kind of tractor-trailer traffic. Last time I was here, we only had one entrance and one exit on Old 146. You had a valid concern. I've been looking at this property for quite a while. I've watched that intersection of Red Bluff and 146, and I scratched my head going, this poor town has suffered. So as part of that, we then went back and we renegotiated what had been a very poorly-written easement when the original subdivision was done between the hotel, the gas station, and us. We actually cleaned up some issues between the hotel and the gas station itself. And that allows us to now have an egress, which you brought up at the last one, that will now go out onto the new 146 frontage road. I would also say that 90% of our traffic last time was going to be 90% tractor-trailer and 10% smaller. These are smaller distribution operations, and I would flip that to 70% box trucks, which are smaller, and local delivery, and only about 30% tractor-trailer as far as our calculations are concerned.
So I just had a quick question. With the new plan, it also includes 10 individual businesses. Is there, you probably, you obviously couldn't say which would be, but what kind of examples would those businesses be like, and are they, I mean, what could we predict for those who live nearby?
Fair question. The building is designed as a convertible, which means that while it's built as a freezer, it can also run as a cooler. In our current market conditions, it'll definitely have some seafood, frozen seafood. It'll likely have some fresh flowers from South America. It will also house certain types of fruits and vegetables. It may also house beef from Brazil. It is really designed for whether they are large corporations that just want a local satellite so that they can distribute to their individual operations in a metropolitan market. It could be them, or it could be a smaller company that just imports and distributes a particular type of seafood. What I will say is this is a prototype for a program that ultimately will probably be released in every metropolitan market in the country. It appears as if the market demand for this particular type of building, which has not been done. I did a similar version in Los Angeles that has been very successful, but it was a little larger tenant's basis. This one's a little smaller. Each of those, you asked a question about the businesses, the average 7,200-square-foot tenant for this is probably going to have six employees that work in the building, maybe have three, four, or five additional drivers. So there's probably a good 90 people that will be employed as a result of this. And, but some may be very local businesses, and they'll be their first time in Seabrook if they're not already here. And so you'll be pulling from some areas where other people have a need for this.
So this is case in, case out. There's no preparation going to be done into facilities, is that correct?
Correct. You know, occasionally a pallet will fall apart, and you have to repack it, but, sorry, you never experienced that, did you? But no, there is no processing whatsoever. The entire box is frozen, or it's refrigerated, but it is not a processing facility.
Anyone else? With that, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you. 5.0, bid awards. 5.1, consider to take all appropriate action on the bid award for the 2025 sidewalk removal or replacement project, RFP 2025-1-335.
So we went out for a rebid. We received 14 bids this time, ranging from $6.85 to $25.40 a square foot. The $6.85 is a, a good, good number. We would like to use LAC as our contractor for this year's sidewalk program.
Move to approve, 5.1.
Second.
Any questions, concerns? All in favor? Thanks, Brian.
Thanks.
Let's stay up there. 5.2, consider to take all appropriate action on a bid award for the Seascape Waterline
Our contract engineer, Cobb Finley, designed the project, bid the project for us. We received eight bids ranging from 760, 796,818 to 1,506,101. Cobb Finley reviewed the bids, we reviewed the bids. We recommend the low bidder McKinney at the 7,900, 796,818 dollar amount. McKinney has done work for us before. They did the water line along NASA.
Move to approve, 5.2.
Any questions? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
5.3, consider to take all appropriate action on a bid award for RFP 2024-15, the grant writing and management service and authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents for Kimley Horn &amp; Associates and TJD Consulting.
Mayor, staff requests this item to be pulled for lack of backup documentation that we did not get attached to this agenda. We'll bring it back to the next agenda.
Thank you. 6.0, new business. 6.1, consider to take all appropriate action on the ratification of a business development incentive agreement by Seabrook Retail LLC as approved by the Seabrook Economic Development Corporation on December 12, 2024 in accordance with the previous posted Business Incentive Program Project Resolution for facade improvements at 2622 NASA Parkway in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Move to approve, 6.1.
Any questions? Comments?
I agree with JP who spoke earlier. We, we've got to find another avenue with this landlord. I don't think giving him money is, especially the inside looks as bad as, as the outside does.
I'm very uncomfortable with varying from the written policies and procedures for how money is allocated. If this was $50,000 to rebuild the sandwich shop that we all used to know and love on 146, it wouldn't be an issue. Everybody would be 100% in support of it. I understand that there are people that don't maintain their property, but if they meet the requirements of the policies and regulations that we have, we have to treat all our businesses the same. So if one could qualify, another has to qualify, whether we like that business or not. We have to treat them equally.
I'd like to hear from code enforcement on what other issues they're addressing besides just their facade, because there's got to be a lot.
You know, this thing just didn't start. I talked to a number of citizens that were looking for improvements to this property, and during the construction of 146, that our, our code enforcement cut a little slack because of the impact upon businesses. But if we're, you know, this is what we're here to do with, with EDC, is that to partner with a business because they put up money too. This is not a free ride. And to get the businesses up. So if we're going to deny it for this one, you're going to have to figure out which ones we're going to go for or not for, and it's like Rob said, we've got to treat them all equal.
I just want to make sure we are enforcing, we're not, you know, putting a, just a new signage or facade up there, and, and nothing is being done on the inside or, or with anything else.
It will have to all meet code. So, and, and, you know, there's cinder block code, and then there's, you know, inlet floors code. But again, it's got to meet minimum code restrictions regardless.
So doesn't the money that we give them, for example, they get it, they open us up to go in and inspect and hold them accountable for whatever ordinances we have in place, correct?
Correct.
That's a good point.
Well, we're assuming that there are code violations in a building that we haven't inspected, and we don't have a need to inspect it. We will before construction begins, obviously.
And they don't get paid. They don't get paid until-
They don't get paid until construction is complete. It's a reimbursement, not, not an advance. So the, the code, obviously, Code Master will explain.
Counsel, in response to the question, we have had several complaints that we were following up on with the property owner. There have been some additional complaints with occupancy or attempted occupancy without certificates of occupancy or permits being issued for those businesses. So we are following up with these property owners, with this property owner for this facility in question. As far as any type of facade improvement, our previous conversations with the property owner is that anything that they propose to do to the building, aside from simply painting, would require some permitting to explain what it is they're proposing to do to the building at that time. Any of those improvements would have to be permitted and inspected.
Is, is the facility within our ordinances now, or with, within code now?
There are, I would say currently, we are aware of several code violations at, at the property right now that we're in the process of addressing with the property owner.
So they wouldn't get the money until we got them up to code anyway, correct? I mean, that's, that is the way we work.
So the performance we have in there right now is they have to get 50% of the tenants occupied, so by getting 50% of that, those COs would have to be valid before those tenants can open. So that's our way of being able to get behind the facade.
Yeah, I think not only is it a facade improvement by bringing in tenants, those, those tenants are going to have to comply with our-
Code and ordinances.
Tenant by tenant, and we're not going to give them any money until they're 50% occupied. So, you know, resurrecting a derelict building, I think, is, is part of our, our goal in this town to, and there's more than one, and this just happened to be the first one to come along. I don't think 50,000 is out of the question. He's, he's putting up 50,000 himself, so it's, it's a 50-50 partnership. So, you know, I, I don't see why, how we could actually not gain a viable building for, for lease by doing this. You know, I, I think that's, that's one of the things I've heard complaints about EDC about is, you know, we don't do anything. Well, we're doing something. So I, I think that, that it's a step in the right direction. It's not a lot of money out of the budget, and I think it's, everybody sees that derelict building sitting over there, and at least it'll have a fresh face and hopefully new tenants. And until there is new tenants, there isn't any money coming out of our pocket, so that's, that's just my opinion. I think, I think we need to start somewhere, and I think it's a good start.
I guess what I hear is, you know, I, I want to, I want to make the facades in our strip centers look good, and I know that guy happens to be the first one, but after JP brought up that, and you look at these other properties, it's like, man. And maybe we don't have a rule about how we look at it, but I think anytime you give money to anybody, even if they have to do something for it, when you look at all these other places, it doesn't look good to me. And so it's something I just learned about, so I didn't realize that he owned these, this many, and I didn't realize it was, it sounds like to me, if you own 78 businesses and you're trying to, or different places, you probably have someone doing it for you, and doesn't look like the guy's doing much, so.
He went to jail in New York for COVID.
Any other questions? Comments, concerns? Do I hear a motion? No, we got a motion, right? In a second?
In a second.
All in favor of, of the EDC incentive? All in favor? Thank you. All opposed? Okay. 6.2, consider to take all appropriate action on the reading of ordinance 2025-05, a request for approval of amendments to the world-class freezer facility planned unit development, and ordinance amending ordinance 2024-17 for update revisions to the world-class freezer facility planned unit development consisting of 7.19 acres situated in abstract 52- Harris County, Texas, generally located west of Old State Highway 146, east of State Highway 146, north of Red Bluff Road, and south of Port Road, being more particularly described by meets and bounds in Exhibit A attached here too, by revising the existing plan, plan regulations, restrictions, terms, and conditions, more particularly described in Exhibit B attached here too, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent or in conflict here with providing for a penalty in the amount not to exceed $2,000 for each day of violation of any provision hereof by inclusion into the code and providing for severability and notice.
Move to approve, 6.2.
Second.
Any more comments? All in favor? Joe, were you in favor? Okay. Unanimous, thank you. 6.3, discussion and possible action to direct staff regarding the purchasing process for Crowther's Garden, Coastal Gardens East Track grading and drainage project specifically to discontinue prebid and cooperative purchasing, purchasing options and proceed with a rebid as a request for proposals for grading and drainage work and including procurement plans for the water irrigation and electrical on the project.
So this is, this is something that you probably going to have to help with, Brian, but, so- but so this project just like seems stalled. And one of the things is the, no one bid on this, I guess. Is that correct? There were bidders, but then something...
First time there were bidders, the second time there were no bidders. The third time, we went out for, got a buy board, a co-op contract, and it is 250-plus thousand-dollar contract.
Okay.
We're recommending to go out with approval to rebid it.
Yeah. And I'd like to see that. I'd like to see that there was one guy originally that was gonna do this for 50 or 75,000 or whatever like that. So...
He bid that, but he didn't bid the full project.
Okay. And I get that. I've heard that whole story. And so, one, I think that we could go back and look at his bid. And, you know, the other thing I found out is, if someone doesn't finish the bid and you award it to them, they can actually finish it then. Like, hey, you didn't fill out this part. We don't stop giving them the bid. You just say, hey, can you, do you have insurance? Do you have this? And then he can provide it, and then you can move forward. So all I'm saying is, right now, he sounds like the best, you know, answer we have to get this solved, to get this thing moving. Because, again, it's just been sitting and sitting and sitting. And I'd like to see something actually happen and like see some trails, see some stuff going in. So I guess if we have to rebid, we have to rebid. But I'd like to figure out what we can get done.
Is the project the same that we bid before? Or have we changed the scope of the project?
The only scope we have changed is we removed the grubbing requirement.
Okay.
Grubbing would no longer, rubbing is not an aspect of the project anymore.
Okay. How did that reduce the, because we were in...
I have.
$230,000, $240,000.
So then the buy board contract with the rubbing, it was 400 and some thousand.
There's a company out there called Daniel Dean and Dirt Works or whatever. That guy does dirt work. He's on the radio all the time. I mean, someone should contact that guy and see what he can do, because this is what he does. He moves dirt. And this is what we're trying to do. So I kinda don't understand why moving dirt is this complicated. And so, just like to see this project get going.
So 6.3 is basically just for discussion. Is that correct? We don't have any possible action?
The action would be to direct staff to rebid the project, or if you want to change the scope.
So we're being asked to rebid this, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Under the same scope of...
As presented by staff. Yes, correct.
See, okay. All right.
So it's been a year or two. Memory fails me from time to time. I want to say the original, when we got four bids for it, I want to say those came in in the 170 to 220 range, but I don't remember for sure.
It was over 200,000, I believe. Right, Mike?
It was in that 200 range?
Yeah.
Okay. Good enough. Good enough. I want to see the project moving forward. If we have a bid for 240, and that's what our budget is for it, I know that if we could get it for a lot less, it's worth doing, but I don't want to wait. I don't want to kick the can down the road another year to get this project underway. I was not aware that we did get a bid back. If we choose to do this and go out with a rebid, it would be the same RFP?
We could, we can work with Finance and Gail to see if we can simplify the requirements.
The same as number three.
Pardon?
This would be number four time to bid it, right?
Yes.
So it would be the same RFP as number three?
Yes, ish. Yeah, it would be the same bid items.
The same bid item?
Bid items, yes.
Is it realistic to expect that we would get a significantly different price from the 240 that we have right now?
Right.
I have, that's whoever bids on the project.
So either we're gonna need to rethink it, and we're gonna have to have a new RFP, or we're gonna get the same bids that we got before.
There's a guy that wants to do this for 50 to 75,000 right now. He's already said that he'd do that. He's one of the original bidders. And the other thing is, we gotta make it super simple. I think some bids have been going out, is what I've heard, is they're very complicated. And sometimes it, the people have said, I don't even know what they were asking. So I just think you have to say, it's moving dirt, it's doing this, just super simple. I think when, that you use engineer words or all these kinda things, people don't really get it. And I heard that, but my point is, I'm not saying it's anything on you. I'm just saying, that's what I've heard. It needs to be very simple. There's a guy who really wants to do it. If we have to go back out again, but if you just make it simple, exactly what we're trying to do, it's moving dirt here, here, or here.
Well, other than the first time, has this guy come back to bid? We bid it three times. I don't think he's come back to bid.
Well, he was told that he didn't have like a certain thing, but he can easily have that or get it. He said he didn't really understand the original bid. And, but anyway, I'm sure that guy could be contacted, and it could be done. So...
I would suggest that if we're gonna change anything on the scope of the job, that one, we get open spaces and trails, fully involved, and have them sign off on it before we go out. Because that's what started the glitch in the very beginning.
You can create the RFP, and then take it to...
Right.
Absolutely.
My concern is that we say, okay, we're gonna send it out for RFP again. And six months from now, we get all our bids back, and guess what? It's right at 220, 240,000. And we have that much right now that we know we have a bid for that right now. I don't want to wait, wait for it to kick down the road for six months. I'd like to see this project moving forward. And I don't, I'm not experienced enough in dirt contracting to be able to talk about changing costs and that kinda stuff we can anticipate over the next six months.
Do we know where this funding is coming from? Have we agreed on that yet? Is it insurance money, or is it general fund, or?
It's insurance money.
Out of the Carruthers fund.
Out of the insurance?
Out of the, yes. The insurance from the demolition.
What's that balance right now? Do you know?
I don't know often. About 250.
The insurance fund won't get Carruthers Gardens where it needs to be.
No.
This, finding the funding to get it there is something counsel is gonna have to figure out over the next year. But hopefully, we can figure out over the next year, not over the next three.
Jeez. Well, I've talked to Jesse. As a matter of fact, just before this meeting, I talked to him again. One of the concerns is that, from a couple of the bidders, is that the process or the language in the bid form was confusing to them. So they declined. So if we, you know, what if we all sit down and look over at the verbiage and just see if there is glitches anywhere that we can get rid of, and try and get the bidders to come out? The problem is that the same bidders are bidding it, and there are the numbers that are 400 and 200 and 250. We aren't getting the people that are under that, because, again, these are guys, no offense to them, but these are guys that sit on a bulldozer all day. You know, they are looking at a form that they didn't understand, and they were afraid to bid. So, and nothing against anybody here at the city.
No. And that, all those things may be true, but I think y'all are also forgetting the fact that we had a legitimate bid, a reputable contractor, and y'all voided the contract.
We understand.
So, again, there's a perception that bidders may not want to bid for, you know, in the event that y'all are going to reject their bid, because someone who doesn't complete a bid, who doesn't have the requirement elements such as, you know, insurance, that those should be overlooked. So I think there's multiple reasons other than just the language of engineers.
But Mike, it may be from the, I guess, the three-man shop instead of the 100-man shop that is bidding these two, which is what we're looking, you know, with all the requirements that we have in there, I think we may be scaring off some of the smaller contractors. And, you know, maybe somebody that can do it for some better numbers. I'm just saying that, you know, let's just take one last look at it. Jesse's all for going back out to bid. I talked to him a little while ago. And so, you know, let's look at it. Let's get them to review it after we maybe wordsmith it a little bit and see what we can put into plain language that I can understand rather than legalese, which nobody understands. No offense, David.
Right. That's all I was trying to say, too. That's what I've heard. So I think if you sit down with open spaces and trail and whoever else you need to legally or whatever, and then just word it out like that. And like, I think Tom said it pretty well, you know, guys sitting on a bulldozer, and they own their own company, they're not gonna be talking certain ways that, like maybe you do. They just talk a lot more simple. So that's...
I'm not saying their numbers are gonna be smaller.
Exactly. No, it's not.
We may be able to get a bid out of them.
Exactly.
And again, we do, we advertise it. So all the folks that y'all are talking to at the Dairy Queen or wherever it may be can come and bid. And we host a pre-bid meeting and, you know, clarify, not me, but the people that know what the project is, clarifies those elements that you might have a question on.
I'm not saying it's gonna be any better. I'm just saying, well, let's do it one last time. If it doesn't work, I'm all for Rob's opinion, and let's just grab the guy that already bid 200.
That's pretty much your choice. You either, you either change the proposal, or you rebid. I mean, there's no real change, no real choices here.
As long as we walk away from here with something moving forward on Carruthers, I'll support it. But I won't support just kicking it down the road again.
Well, I think, I think if we sit down, Mike, and with Brian and Gail, and I think we can work out some wording that may be a little more simplistic, that, like I said, I can understand. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Do we need a motion to rebid?
I think that's enough direction, staff.
Okay. 6.4, consider to take all appropriate action on Amendment Number Three to the memorandum of settlement agreement between the City of Seabrook and the Port of Houston authority.
Mayor and counsel, I prepared a little presentation before you get into your action items for the next two agenda items. I understand there's a lot of questions. Just as a recap, this council has identified the mayor and mayor pro temp, so we've been working on this project for well over a year in negotiations. So the, what is an industrial district agreement? So I know a lot of questions were arising of why do an IDA? This agreement is a typical agreement that usually happens between industrial-type entities with cities looking for the properties already, in our case, not disannexed yet, but will be disannexed. The agreement avoids annexation on the part of the entity in return for payments or incentives. Historical overview, just wanted to put a recap in there. I know that city council's well-versed on this, but just again, for public consumption, back in 2007, the city council at that time was working with the port, trying to figure out some of the limitations. And the port at that time owned property within the city limits. They acquired some additional property from Accrill. Fast forward, in their designation of doing some land development in the complex, a lawsuit did emerge. So City of Seabrook and Port of Houston has a history that I think everybody's well aware of in the city. We went to court, went up to the higher court. Ultimately, in 2007, the city council and the port settled, and a settlement agreement was born. After that, in 2007, went forward with disannexation of certain properties within the limits, and also established the first industrial district agreement at that time. Those amendments have since been amended in a couple of minor ways. In 2015, the addition of quiet rail zones on the north side were added. We also did adjustments for road infrastructure and environmental impact measures in 2018. So tonight, before you, you've got the two agreements that the committee have been working on in addition with the Port of Houston. Some of the points that, during the negotiations that were raised of why to renew the IDA, we've got an agreement here that will allow some control from the city's aspect over different additional things such as screening barriers. We've got protection to control and manage the port growth without having to provide any additional municipal services. And we ensure that the Port of Houston pays for the city in what is called payments in lieu of taxes with these IDAs, i.e. our pilot program, our pilot payments, which are typical in IDAs. Otherwise, the port properties that are now, have been acquired, are exempt from taxes. So if you go and look at the properties that are already changed ownership with on HCAD, you can see that those are at zero values. These type of agreements also allow for other incentives. The land that's been acquired by the port, in the agreements and attached to your agenda tonight, this exhibit shows in purple, the UTEC reference track in purple. This is property that was acquired by the port by eminent domain. That case has been settled. In green, the tracks that are called the Old 146 tracks, those were purchased outright. So the purple and the green areas are now under port ownership. The agreement settlement summary in cap is 15-year renewal for the IDA. It's asking for additional expansion of those parcels we just looked at. 1.5 in incentives for Bayside Park or other projects in the Seabrook Park system, 283,656 back to the city for a road easement, 503,125 for the Pine Gully dispute. And then the pilot programs with an upfront payment of 700,000 and a tiered program with an accelerator clause over the next 10 years. The two, side by side, again, the city had an agreement in 2007, so we have an expired IDA. This is looked at as a renewal. There is some expansion with the properties that will be added, and then ultimately brought back before this body, if approved, for disannexation. So on the left, you see on the 2007 agreement, just as a recap, that agreement dealt with Pine Gully, park property acquisition, Berman Trail System, Trail System, Commercial Road, rezoning of a C3 property, the rail spur, a rail barrier wall, or 1.6 million. We've talked about the 1.6 million. The wall was not built per that agreement, so this port has given the city the 1.6. Ponds, terminal use and development and disannexation for that first IDA. On the right, you'll see the 2025 agreement. Overall, it's a 3.9. This will be a 15-year renewal, adding the two tracks, Old 146 tracks and the UTEC tracks to this renewal. Again, no municipal services, annual IDA payments totaling 1,645,000, return of the road easement in lieu of payment for 291,217, Pine Gully issue of 503,125, park system contribution of 1.5 million. The settlement agreement in the attached exhibits does include that there would be a new Toddville Trail System and screening where the southern access road will curve around close to Toddville at the north side of town. Pond and drainage modifications, Woodlands Forest Preserve standard. The Woodlands Forest Preserve standards is the recommended and negotiated standard that for any site that the port looks to be developing in our area, that there would be a heavily wooded area that we planted, and not just planted with any type of junk trees, but to the Woodlands Forest Preserve standard, so that at certain angles, once it's mature, that we would be blocked from seeing any of those uses. And then easements would be given for city utilities. This is too small to see, but this is an excerpt from your settlement agreement, just referencing the buffering. And then the next few exhibits, again, are just encompassed in the agreements that we'll be discussing. But the boxed area over here on the right is what we're referencing with the Toddville Trail System, buffering with the wall. It'll be a trail system, a wall, the Woodlands Preserve. So there'll be some barriers from the Toddville section in this area. Land use is excerpt that we looked at. And then also included, they've included four potential exhibits of the commercial road alignments. So these are slightly different, but this... So these are slightly different, uh, but this would be the connection at Red Bluff and then this is going behind the berm area in a couple of different renditions. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions?
Okay. So someone talked at, um, at the beginning and they brought up that 503,000 for the, um, Pine Gully. So clarify what that, what that goes to for.
So we've got ongoing issues, uh, that we've disputed in the first settlement agreement with the Pine Gully dredging and that would go towards any improvements within the gully itself.
Okay. So, um, this is, we're saying, we're having this discussion for the people that are watching and listening. So that's not going to Pine Gully Park where people actually go down near the water. This is all for, you know, um, maintaining that waterway so the water flows out into Galveston Bay.
Correct.
Correct. Just making sure everybody knows.
But also they're affecting our, the path to, um, the bay because they're adding some, some, uh, areas to, from the drain off. I don't remember where exactly, but isn't that correct?
Um, as far as what the public is used to in our trail system?
No, when they, uh, develop the rail, uh, yard, they're, it's going to be close to our trails that they have to tie in to some, their drainage will tie in and then eventually go out to the gully.
Oh, yes. Okay. So over here, close to Old 146, there is some drainage modifications. So where we're used to coming off the berm, where the trail is kind of depicted down here, and it's kind of small, um, the tracks, the UTEC track and the old 146 tracks, uh, there will be a drainage modification, uh, right there where the road kind of curves in this section right there. Is that the area you're talking about?
Yes. Yes, I thought there was, it was going to affect, um, like with either silt or, or something that we had, they talked about that was going to affect and that maybe that's the reasoning where we're going to have to do some, um, upgrades.
Well, I think, I think you're saying where, where the drainage, uh, is going to come through the berm, they are going to have to extend from that location to the wide part of Pine Gully. They're doing some dredging. Um, and it will affect our trail where we enter the trail right now, you, from, from, uh, from Public Works. They are going to rectify that though. They are going to make us whole.
Just temporary, yeah.
It's just temporary during the construction. So, uh, everything there, actually it's going to be, Pine Gully will be improved by the port for that 400, 400-foot section. It'll be, it'll be widened.
Okay. I mean, honestly, there's been, um, very little time from the time this, uh, information came out on Friday to the public for them to really digest everything. Um, I would really like to, I know everybody doesn't want to hear this, but, um, not make the decision tonight and have a town hall meeting at, get the Port of Houston wrap out here. Let's really discuss this with the details with, um, with everyone and let everyone know what the rail yard's going to look like, what the flyover is going to look like. Let them know, um, exactly what's going on because it's not being discussed. They are still currently building houses right next to this. They have probably, I know the realtors aren't telling them, you know, that this is happening. Um, we need to let the people know and I think a $4 million price tag after a lot of some, some valid questions have come up since this information's been out is not enough.
Gail, could you go back to the side by side comparison, please? So in 2007, we took it to court, lost the first time and took it to court again and ended up settling. We gave away 41 acres. We got a berm and 1.6 million dollars. So allowing this to drag on much longer, our, our IDAs expired. Um, and the port is willing to work with us on this. Compared to what we got in 2007, this is a screaming deal. I'm, I'm not sure what we actually think we could change from what the port has agreed now, especially if we look at it in light of what they did in 2007.
The value of the homes over there, the quality of life, it's not just going, I mean, it's going to be hard to, to sell those houses after all the noise that's over there. Um, why, why aren't we getting only 15 years of payments? Why aren't we getting it forever? You know?
The IDAs, that's the max. You can go.
Yeah, we, the, the IDA is a 15-year max by state law.
Also, the, the flyover is tech stock in port. It has nothing to do with the IDA.
The port owns the property that, the, that the, uh, flyover is going on. And that's on this side of the berm. They can de-annex that and get it, give us nothing.
So what I'm hearing is, um, people were saying, hey, this is very little notice since it came out Friday. We've known longer, but not that much. Anyway, the point is, um, and we couldn't talk about it. But anyway, there's, there's, people had the questions. They're asking, and so that's why Jackie brought it up like that. I understand it. I would, you know, you, you talk about the, uh, IDA has expired. The port had moved super slow and then all of a sudden, right now, they want to move fast. That's always something that I think about because like, okay, why all of a sudden do you want to work, work so fast where you've been working slow? But at the same time, is this the best deal we can get? You know? I mean, I definitely am not one that wants to fight the port because you're going to lose that battle. But at the same time, you want to get everything you can. But I think this is the bigger picture. This is what I think was being, trying to be said. The people aren't being, they're, the communication to the people is not enough. Not enough time and it's not enough detail. We get some of it, but then, you know, we were bound by not saying anything because it was an executive session. The point though is this is what the people want. They keep telling me this. Why do we find out and then in a few days we have to go vote? They wanted more time to digest this, look at it and have their say. That's the communication with this city that I think is always missing. It's like, we have to do it right now. That's why the people get angry. So that's why you, you get more people showing up and you get more questions going around. And then of course you see the internet stuff, which is nuts. But anyway, the point is that's why they, uh, are asking those questions.
I mean, we're not in a time constraint as far as like if we can't, we could push this down to the next meeting. But what, we can't?
Well, the port, the port has to take it to their board of directors, their, their commission and delaying it is a problem for them.
I think you have to keep in mind, uh, one of the reasons, and this, our negotiations didn't start last week. This has been going on for almost two years to try to, to get it renewed. The legislature's back in session and they have a lot of friends there. The IDA and the value of what Seabrook has been offered is well in line with the other IDAs within the, the Harris County and Port of Houston, uh, area. So it would not be on, beyond the, the realm of reason to say to the legislature, Seabrook doesn't want to do it. And so this, there could be a bill passed saying they were offered a fair price, so they, they have to take it. Or they could just pull it, we get zip, they own the land and they go ahead and do it. And that's the real thing. They own the land. Seabrook doesn't own the land.
But why are we, why do we have to de-annex it? We know that they own the land. I was asking David earlier, you know, they cannot necessar, I mean, um, he says they can. I mean, I just would like more information on it, that they can force a de-annexation on a property that, um, they already have. Not, you know, I, am I saying that right? Can they, I asked him, can they force, um, de-annexation through eminent domain? And he said, there is a way. I thought it had to be voluntary, uh, an agreement, but it's not going to be quick. And it's also, I mean, one more meeting, we can get, have, have, bring in the public, let them get, uh, understand this better because we are, uh, tonight, if we agree on this, it's final. I mean, we have no, um, authority of, of our sound or, you know, at all, lights.
They're all, those provisions are in your 2007 that carry over in the 2025 agreement. So there was provisions in '07 that they talked about, lighting, noise, um, and those are still in your current agreement.
Yeah. This, this is just an amendment to the agreement. It's the, it's just an amendment. It's not a.
We're just de-annexing additional lots, right?
We aren't.
What do you mean, we're not?
So this, the IDA is, if it was approved tonight, we would be coming back with a de-annexation ordinance. Making reference to the historical of this item is that the zoning issue. So when the port acquired property, the 2007 city council, the whole issue was if they acquire it, can they do, do they have to abide by city zoning? The disannexation may or may not come into play. If you do it or you don't do it, there could be us looking at them going ahead with the uses.
After all of the social media and calls and emails and all of that, I just feel like there's, if we make a decision on this tonight without the public more informed, then we're going to get, we're going to have repercussions from that. That's my, that's my opinion.
Are there any legal questions that we need to discuss before we make that issue?
I mean, if, it, it's up to y'all. If y'all want to have a discussion about that, we can.
I'm not sure what the legal ramifications of delaying this is.
I don't, I don't either.
Okay.
I'm not aware of that. I do know that, I mean, that as a condemning authority that now the underlying issue in the lawsuit is you got competing governmental interests and what's the prevailing public purpose? It's an uphill battle, no doubt. So, I mean, if, if property that was to be disannexed would still be part of the pilot program. And even if they were part of the city, that we would, they wouldn't be subject to have a warrant tax anyways. So I don't know if there's necessarily a financial downfall to being in the corporate limits or not, because all that property is subject to the payment in lieu of taxes, which is better than zero.
Yeah, yeah. If it's, if it, if it's port use, they're not paying any, if it's, if they own the property, they're not paying any.
No. I mean, I'm happy to answer legal questions out here. If it gets to something that maybe needs to be attorney, private privilege, we can go back there, but I don't, there's, we can have this discussion out here.
Okay. My biggest concern is we, we don't act on this and we turn it down and, and we don't get anything. We're back to 2007 where we got a berm pile of dirt.
I just think we need a little more time with the public. I think we can push this down to one more meeting and in the meantime, get a, get a town hall meeting in here and discuss it. It's a big deal. And I think the public feels left out of information.
I mean, if it's for explanation, uh, that's one thing, but we, we can't change what we've already negotiated. I mean, if we do, we cancel everything.
Well, I think what I'm hearing from the people is that they, they just want to have, be explained to them and have some time. I, I hear what you're saying too about, you know, I would normally probably agree that we could vote, but if, if we gave it a, the two weeks, it's just two weeks and then voted, I don't think the port is going to go, oh, well, they didn't vote tonight. You know, they just, we just want to have somehow, but I don't know how you have the, a meeting between now and two weeks where the public can be involved. So I don't understand. Maybe it has to be a month, but I, I think one month for, for what we're looking at in two years is not too much. To let the people have their say, that's what the people keep saying is like, why are we doing it this way? Why didn't we have a public hearing prior? That's just what, that's what they say. So, you know, there's no explanation. We just come to this and now we're at a vote. So that's why the people get upset.
So what happens if the port pulls it?
Do you really think they're going to pull it in, in a month?
Hmm?
You really think they're going to just back out of it all for, because we want to have one town hall meeting?
Yeah. They own the land. They're going to do what they want on the land, just like they're doing currently on all the land they own. So what's the incentive? The incentive for the IDA started a long time ago when, like the port would go in and take over land, not pay property taxes, not pay sales taxes. So the community said, hey, this isn't fair. You need to, to pay us for, for this lost income. And that's what it was about. But shoot, if I was the port, why don't I just pull it and we'll just sit on it for, you know, another 10 years? And that's reality. And believe me, I started with dealing with the port back in 98, before Bayport was built when they first came in. And they hold all the cards, all of them.
Well, let's, I mean, we can explain that to the, to the residents. I, I think that, I just don't believe that there, we, it's either no deal or deal tonight or nothing.
That's regardless of how big the risk is, it's, it's what, a $4 million risk. And regardless of how we feel about it, look, I'm not entirely happy about it either. I think there's a lot of things that could be more in our favor, but you're negotiating with the port.
Why?
And waiting a week, whether or not they decide they've just had enough of the negotiations and move on, it may or may not, uh, affect them that way. But going back to them and changing, saying, hey, we like items, this, but we want to change this, that and the other, is not a realistic approach in, in, in dealing with all of this. So postponing it isn't going to change the content. We, I mean.
It's going to keep 13 and a half thousand people that live here, uh, feel better about what's going on and, and not, you know, we're going to hear from them if we make the decision tonight.
We're going to hear from it if we don't.
Well, I'm not sure what to do.
No.
This isn't an open meeting. I'm sorry.
You actually can if you want, because we've been told that before, but, you know, anyhow.
David said yes, think we could if we want.
If, if the mayor as chair wants to recognize people or you collectively as a majority of council, you can recognize people during a discussion.
I mean, it, unfortunately, it's not a public hearing.
It's not a public participation portion of the agenda, though.
I'm not sure I want to do this. Jordan, you want to say anything?
Uh, sure, yeah.
Jordan's, Jordan's with the port.
Hello, Mayor, uh, City Council and citizens of Seabrook. I'm Jordan Frisby from Port of Houston Authority and I've been working on negotiating this deal for quite a while now. And, uh, you know, I just want to say, we have, uh, we work really hard to accommodate the wishes and concerns of the City of Seabrook, uh, and, and this, the concerns of the citizens that have been conveyed to us through, uh, the city council and mayor who we've been talking to. And you can just look at this deal and see that we've gone way above and beyond, uh, in terms of the standard of like screening, landscaping. It's so far beyond what we've done on any of our other properties. You know, um, the reality is the port is an industrial facility and it is. You know, the reality is, the port is an industrial facility and it is just very close to large portions of Seabrook. And it's also an important economic engine. It's creating a lot of high-paying jobs and it's creating a lot of prosperity in the region as well. And that just creates some tension. And this agreement is the best that we can do to try to resolve that tension. So I think, I, I can't, I can't 100% predict how the Port Commission will respond. However, I think this offer is very generous. I think it will be difficult for the Port Commission to increase the dollar amount that's on the table here.
Do you think they'll, it's, it's all or nothing tonight if we had, do we have an opportunity to have a town hall meeting to address some of the concerns of the residents?
I, that's really a, it's really just a decision of you, the city council, on whether you wanna make that or not. And then I'll just take whatever feedback you bring to our executive director and, and the Port Commission, and they'll direct us how to proceed.
I mean, do you think we have a little bit, do we have another month if we need it to make that decision?
Uh, respectfully, I don't think I'm the right person to-
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Jordan. Yes. We don't have a motion.
Do we have one?
No.
I move to approve item 6.4. Take all appropriate action on amendment number three to the settlement agreement between City of Seabrook and Port of Houston Authority.
Second.
A motion in second. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. It passes. 6.5, concerning to take all appropriate action on the amended and restated industrial district agreement IDA between the City of Seabrook and the Port of Houston Authority. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve 6.5.
Second.
Any discussion? I think we already discussed it.
We voted on the amendment, and this is just the entire document with the amendment attached, correct?
The first was amendment to the settlement agreement. This is an amendment and restatement of the original agreement. Amended and restated agreement.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. 7.1, discussion on the feasibility, benefits, and potential implementations, areas for permeable pavement in Seabrook to improve stormwater management and sustainability.
All right, with the, the organizations that are coming in and the scale of some of the projects coming into the city, permeable pavement is currently not allowed by ordinance here in Seabrook. All I'm hoping to achieve with bringing this tonight is direction to staff to investigate the feasibility of permeable pavement use within the city of Seabrook. What it would mean to a business is bigger parking lots, smaller detention ponds. For example, with the one we saw earlier today, imagine that was a grocery store, permeable pavement might have allowed them to shrink that detention pond by a significant amount, allowing more parking lots, more revenue, et cetera, et cetera. Since it's currently not allowed, all I'm looking for is to investigate it, see what standards we would use. New Orleans has some very clearly laid out standards and expectations for it. There's some very good ones from overseas as well. But investigate it, see if this is another tool we wanna put in the toolbox of developers within our city.
So, Raul, I would completely agree. I'm, I'm familiar with this process. We do need to do some research and feasibility and how we would write it in our code. There is some systems out there that work very well. It's an environmentally sound program. And so I would definitely agree that we need to move forward.
Do you know why we restricted it?
What's that?
Do you know why we ever restricted it?
When permeable pavement first got to be a thing years and years ago, there was probably some very good reasons to restrict it. It can very easily get silted in.
That's exactly why. The old, the old technology silted in easily. Most engineering firms said it was a bad idea. I think that technology's gotten better.
Not only has the technology gotten better, the way ordinances are written limits the amount of silt that can fall into it. For example, you can't make an entire pavement permeable. You have to have a minimum number of square footage of drainage from soil-carrying water that it, it's very exceedingly complex and it's exceedingly expensive. But current technology and methodology seem to have largely solved the siltage problem that caused it to be out of vogue years ago.
There, there is a close example. Galveston Bay Foundation, they finished their building, and they did a great job with it. You can only can see it through Google Earth, but you can go over there as well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea.
Good. So Brian?
I have direction. I can, I can look into it. I think it would be a good idea. The, the technology has improved. You just have to do it right the first time. But it's, it's possible, yeah.
Okay, good. Appreciate it. Thanks. 7.2, discussion regarding the funding of the repair of Pine Gully Pier.
So we got those pictures. Okay, this is one of them. Can we, can we go to the next one? I think it's the-
It's a separate email, sorry.
Yeah, okay. No worries, no worries.
Had to send two.
So this, so I was talking about redoing the, you know, not redoing it, but, you know, that was the, thing was talked about. It would be like 2.8 million. But I talked to a pier company and they came out and looked a couple of weeks ago. Actually, it was really good. The guy, a super good guy, came out and talked to me and a couple of other people were there. But he looked at all the, the tide was really far out that day. And we walked down onto the sand and he looked at all the pilings. And the pilings he could see right there, you know, because we could go out about 200 or 300 feet. It's a thousand-foot pier. So we went out quarter of the way. All the pilings were good. And then there's a new thing, it's not new, but it's called a snap jacket. And a snap jacket gets put around the, the pilings if they were damaged. So one of the things that they're looking at too is this guy had, that, there's a snap jacket right there. So what happens is this, there was another storm and the guy had these snap jackets around a bunch of his pilings. And he called up and said, hey, this storm took out my whole pier. It took everything. The only thing it didn't do is every one of the pilings that you put the snap jackets around, they're still there. The rest was gone. So that's, that's one way to save any pilings. Now, I think there's only two or three actual pilings missing, so that would only have to be that. The estimate, it's just a very rough estimate, is about a million bucks. We could redo the whole pier. Not with all snap jackets, just the ones that needed. And then later on, if you need to put a snap jacket on, you do it. The other thing he said, there's a section of the pier that actually has the hand railings on it, and they're built out of wood. And he said he knows his, he's doing piers for a long, long time, so is his family. He said that there's the reason that you got a lot of the damage to your pier. You have that wood railing up there like that. And what happens is the pier goes underwater during a storm because the tide rises. And then floating debris comes in, like a big telephone pole, hits it, and then twists, and then just rips, rips everything out. So he said, go with this rope idea right here. Still safe. It looks better, birds don't get on it, and it's a heck of a lot cheaper. Because you're going, remember, we're going out 1,000 feet and coming back 1,000. If you have all that in wood, it's a huge expense. If you have it in rope, it's a lot cheaper. So that's a, I think, a pretty good idea. So one of the things I like to do is, you know, instead of going with, you know, cement pilings and, you know, this wash-through decking, which is super expensive, all that, which would be 2.8 million, we can get it down to about a million bucks. I think that's doable. And the other thing is, he said in this entire Galveston Bay complex, there are no cement piling piers. We don't, we'd be the only one with it. So he thinks that's a huge overkill. And like he said, with all the storms that this pier has actually gone through, your pilings are good. And again, the snap jacket fixed that issue. So where I'm at is, I'd like to at least move forward on trying to get a bid on this pier, you know, and with those ramifications, you know, like the rope, I keep hearing about, it's safety, it's safety. Okay, if you have a swimming pool, and I've talked about this a lot, someone falls into a three-foot or four-foot swimming pool, it's got a cement bottom. Well, you're falling on sand out there. It just happens to be dark water. Everybody goes crazy about dark water. So i- it's actually safer if you fell off of a pier into the sand, because there's nothing else out there. You know, the tide was out, there was nothing, there's no extra pilings. If you would just fall off to the side, it's just sand. You're not gonna get hurt. But, um, and most people could stand up in three, four feet of water. So anyway, the rope is a cheaper method, and I think we should look into this, get bids, and try to move forward so we can get this pier built. And by the way, on, on the social media thing, there was a couple hundred-plus people who responded to this. And every single one, 100% were positive. There wasn't a single negative on this whole idea.
Do we need to run this through the engineer?
Well, if, yeah, we'll need to find somebody to draw this up so we can bid it. So I'll have to research and see if it's our current architect that we've already spent money with, that will, I'll probably have to bring a proposal back. But we'll have to have something to bid, change the design that you guys are gonna have to look at as far as architectural, somebody to put drawings out.
This guy's, and he said that his engineer, he sent him a picture, and he said, if, if you are telling me that this is good, he goes, as the engineer, I would sign off on this, and especially with snap jackets, because they're even better. So structurally, it's sound. He already has an engineer that could look at it like that. And of course, he's done many, many piers in this area. So anyhow, yeah, whatever we need to do to get this moving forward, I'd love to do that.
Okay.
So don't we have some engineer and work already done?
We do. The city council, a couple of years back, instructed us to go out for a proposal. We talked about how much we wanted to build a resilient pier. So I think the contract was over $100,000. So we have fully constructed, engineered stamped drawings. We've gone out to bid. At the time, we thought the estimate was gonna be around a million dollars. When it bid, it was a little over 2, 2.2 million dollars. And that was including the demolition of the old piers.
And so we have some opportunity for grant?
I was actually, Joe put this on and we had put in for the Harris County. So Harris County has a partnership grant every year. So I put in for this, but it's still a, only a 50-50 match. I don't have anything right now. We could leverage the city's million dollars that we would be looking at this, at this time. The county also did come back and say that in 2022, we applied for the grant. They would be willing, if we need to demolish the piers, they'll also give us 50% of the demolition. So those are two 50% options, but those are the only two grant options I have right now.
So, so the issue is, is that it doesn't matter if we build it with this structure here. Nicholas is gonna happen again, and burl's gonna happen again. We see it all around the bay. And people's, the decks come apart. We really need something a lot more resilient for our citizens. We need something that's more, that's safe, that's ADA, that's even higher potentially. So I, I think we need to continue where we were going, but we just need to bring it forward and see if, what other grant monies we might be able to get. And if we need to go back out to the citizens and say, hey, let's, let's have another survey and let's find out how many people are gonna support this, because it's a million dollars that we're gonna spend. Well, so anyway, I'm, I'm just, I'm for a more resilient, forward-thinking, something that's gonna be there for a long period of time, not having to replace this, this pier every other year, or every year for that matter. And I've seen it happen around, on our coastal coastline. People are losing their piers on smaller storms, Nicholas, burl, you name it. It's just every year. We just don't have that kind of money to continue to put out a million dollars for this kind of, this kind of system, in my opinion. I, I'd love to see something a lot more resilient.
Well, I'd like to look at, actually Joe's idea, the snap jacket, using the existing piers and putting the snap jacket around them and still building the resilient upper deck. Because I think there's some money saved if we can use the old pilings. So if we can go with the old pilings, put snap jackets on, and then build a resilient deck, like we, we were designed.
Blow through.
Yeah. I still think there's money savings there. We don't have demo costs then.
Can we, can we get our original engineer to assess snap jackets into what Joe has brought forward?
Yes. I, I reached out to him, told him we would be talking about this again tonight, so I can reach out to him with those comments and see what his ideas would be.
Does the snap jackets go all the way down?
No.
Do the snap jackets, they're the whole length of the pilings?
Oh, yeah. They actually go down into the water.
Okay.
I mean, down into the sand.
Whatever the highest level of water.
But, but again, if we don't have the cost of demo and taking the old pilings out, then there's, there's cost savings immediately.
Yeah, yeah.
And the county was willing to give us the money for demo, right?
Yes. They, right when we were prepping for the agenda, I think in 2022, we applied and we thought it was a million dollars, we retracted. And I'm not sure, the county had a reconsideration of the 2022. They just submitted that they would be willing to work with the city if they need demolition. It would be a 50-50 as well. So both the construction, I think, and the demolition, the construction has been put back into the 2025 offerings. And then the demolition, they're coming back up and saying they'll offer demolition from the old grant. So we need to get the, the county, in the meanwhile, I'll talk with the architect. The bigger question would be if we can rearrange that, seeing if the county has any issues with us keeping that grant in the 2025 pot.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there would probably be an issue with the county to bring that forward, the demolition cost back into the prop, project. So if we can save the money on the demo, go with the cheaper, cheaper structure and do a sustainable deck, we may be, we may have saved some money. Okay, thanks, Joe. 7.3, discussion regarding a flag burning ceremony at the Bay Area Veterans Memorial.
Okay, well, the one, the, the people that lived right across from Merlion, right next door to the flag retirement facility, they moved out. Last Friday, I went and finally saw the people that live there now. And their family was in from Wisconsin. And so I talked to them. And I told them what we're trying to do, you know, that would be, it's been voted to have a permanent facility there. We'd be burning American flags, and it was perfect. The wind was blowing right off the bay, right to their house. And I said, so if you're burning these flags, the smoke would come right to your house. And she looked right at me and said, we're patriots, no problem. I don't have an issue with this at all. We think this is a really cool thing. Love the memorial, love the flag thing, and they really like it. So what I'm trying to say is to draw more attention to this and get some more people interested is you bring out the, the propane tank, you have the burner, you just set it on the ground, and you have the ceremony and burn the flags that way. There's not the permanent structure there, of course. And you just burn the flags. But of course, you bring out the Boy Scout, Girl Scout, the police fire, everything EMS. It brings the community together, and you can burn these flags. And we show, like, the, the box out here has been filled two or three times. I have so many at my storage, I have to have a special spot for them, and it's massive. So I have so many flags, it's, I haven't even counted them. Well, anyway, you burn the first one reverently and you do the whole ceremony with it. The rest just get burned. So of course, we could have, like, the club out there and have hot dogs and drinks. And of course, we'd have to close down the street for a few hours and do that ceremony. I don't know exactly- I don't know exactly what day yet, but we would try to do it on a weekend day to get as many people there as we could. And I just think that would be a, a good, a good thing to draw more attention to the flag retirement facility.
God, thanks, you good idea. I'd like to see something like that happen. On a somewhat related question, obviously, you're not going to burn vinyl and plastic flags out there. How do you dispose of them?
Well, vinyl flags actually do get burned that way. And we actually did one when we were out there with Gail, and at the time, Sean, and Kevin, and a bunch of those guys. So nylon flags and cotton flags get burned. The plastic ones, I guess we could, you know, I, I'm sure there's something you can do with that. I, I think I looked into that a long time ago, I can't remember exactly what they said. But the vinyl and, or the nylon and cotton flags, you definitely, you, that's, you burn them. And we're not going to bury them, because then you'd have to have like a cemetery place for that, and that's huge, too. But anyway, that's the, that's the system, and that's the program for that. So the Boy Scouts do this, there's, there's ceremonies, it's scripted, you have a, you know, a 21-gun salute, you do all that kind of thing. It's a really reverent thing. And then after that, it's, it's like you're celebrating America, you're getting the community together. So I think it's a good thing, so.
So do you want to suggest a date?
Well, I, I'm, I'll have to get back with you on the exact date, but I'm thinking sometime probably in early April. That gives us some time. You know, obviously, if we do it on a weekend, we want to be able to tell the citizens, hey, the, the street would be closed for an hour or two, something like that. And, so, anyway, I'll get back as soon as I can with, with an exact date.
Okay. Thank you. 7.4, regarding the new park to be located on Main Street in place of the old wastewater treatment plant, and a restroom to be constructed at ground level.
Okay, so here's the other thing. This doesn't need to be a long discussion. I know that FEMA has, keeps, has these rules saying that, you know, you have to build the bathroom at 18 feet above sea level. First off, ask yourself this. Anywhere on the Gulf Coast, have you ever seen a public bathroom 18 or 19 feet above sea level? You, you haven't seen it, because no one would ever do that. We'd be the laughing stock. There's a thing called, it's a maceration pump and a one-way valve, you build it at ground level, and they said FEMA could change your insurance, but FEMA's not going to do it. Plus, the bigger thing, there might not be a FEMA soon. So that's something to actually think about. But I really believe if we, when we build that park, we have that bathroom right at ground level. They have one at Sylvan Beach Park, they have them down in Texas City on the Dyke, they have them in Dickinson, they have them in Galveston. Their rates aren't going up, I've talked to the people. I didn't even have to talk to them at Dairy Queen either. But anyhow, the point is, we just need to build that bathroom at ground level. I almost don't care what FEMA says in the sense of, it's got to be 18 feet, because then you're going to either build an elevator or a ADA ramp. So the ADA ramp would probably start at Merlyon and go all the way down to that park, because it can only go up so many inches per feet. It'd just be the craziest structure you ever saw, and people would be going, what the heck is that? And anyway, it just needs to be at ground level like everybody else is doing, and it's not going to be an issue.
Okay, just to give you an update, at our stakeholders meeting regarding the park, this issue was brought up, and our architects are researching it with FEMA. And I know that there's two sides to it, going back and forth, but they're supposed to get back to us and let us know, you know, what we can and can't do.
Well, LaPorte did it, and we asked LaPorte, and they said, yeah, we built it right, exactly where we did at Sylvan Beach. So it's got this big tank on the side of it, it's actually almost buried level to the ground. It's got a one-way valve. Mainly what FEMA is not wanting to happen is to have seawater go back into your wastewater treatment, which then would ruin it. This prevents that from happening. That's what you need. And it's, you know, there's two words for it, maceration pump plus a one-way valve. So anyway, I think it's a kind of a simple, easy solution, but there's no city around that has a bathroom 19 feet above sea level.
What are we doing? What does council want to instruct staff to do?
Like I said, I mean, we, we've got our architects looking at it, and they're, you know, I would rather hear from the authority. I understand, it was all brought up about Sylvan Beach and other places that have at ground-level bathrooms, and, you know, before we go forward and spend money, let's make sure that we're on solid ground.
One of the things, though, that Sylvan Beach is a county park, and that may have something to do with the FEMA tax, or FEMA insurance issue, that the county doesn't care. They're not, they're not into that, as is the city of LaPorte or Seabrook. Same thing with Galveston. Galveston County Beach is a, anyway, let's, let's look at, see what the...
We're meeting next month, no, this month, on the 25th, 26th.
Okay, let's...
So in three weeks, we'll find out.
Let's hear from them. Okay. 7.5, discussion for the plan for maintaining the plants and removing weeds and overall upkeep of the Techstat right away through Seabrook.
So when Techstat did their deal, you know, we, we found out that they'll take care of it for the first year, and that, by the way, how many months are we into that first year right now?
So we actually are not into the first year at all. Look around, we've got a lot of areas that were going to be reforestation, tree planting. So we actually met last week with Techstat, and they're having to go along the frontage road, because we didn't know Center Point was going to put those poles. So they're going to take up all of those trees along the frontage road, and we were trying to figure out where to relocate those. So we did get, Weber has substantially moved out of that site at Red Bluff and 146. So they've graded and mulched, and a great number of the reforestation trees will go over there, will relocate them, and we're looking for other places to relocate it. All that said, they haven't done the planting at the 10th Street areas as well, until that last plant goes in, our one year has not started, so.
Well, that's good to know. So, but here, here's the thing. So I'm just saying, I won't be on council when it comes, but it, it's good to have a plan moving forward, because, like, there's a lot of weeds already. And then, and then, and this will affect the Galveston Bay Foundation, and I'm sure Tom would agree right here. If you're, if someone went out there and had like the little chemical thing and was killing the weeds, you're way up here, up on the rocks, killing the weeds, well, that is going to drain down into the bay. So that's, that's a big deal. And like, obviously, you would have to be, you know, environmentally friendly type of thing, but a lot of that stuff never works. Some of the weeds are actually pretty big stalks already, it's a, I forget the name of it now. I had looked it up, but it gets pretty big really quick. So, and it's, it's like this big rock to walk on, so someone would have to, you know, because it's almost impossible to pull that weed, but then some way, you got to kill it. So, but that's going to take, that's going to be up to our maintenance guys, our, you know, so there's where I'm going with that.
Right, so when we signed the agreement with Techstat, we had a conversation, we kind of knew what we were getting into. We've done some preliminary looks at what a professional landscaping crew. I, I think with the amount of mowing that are Public Works and the limited amount of Public Works we have, it's not a project we can overtake. So we're already looking at landscaping companies, we've got a little bit more time. Once they, we've moved all the trees, we'll get a final quote. It won't be cheap. Once we come back to council, we'll just need to decide which level, you know, if we're looking at somebody being out there once a week, once a month, once a quarter, and then we can determine which level city council at that time wants to go into and how to fund it.
Yeah, well, and good, because I figured it was going to be pretty expensive. It's a long, you know, it's all the way down to the bridge, all the way up to Red Bluff there, but they painted all the sails, it looks really good, really happy about that. So that's, so it's looking better. So, hey, just, we have a plan, that's what I wanted to hear, so that's good.
Okay. 7.6, hear a report on the previously approved item on October 4, 2022, license and indemnity agreement between the city of Seabrook and the Seabrook American Flag Initiative.
I, I bring this up because at our stakeholders meeting, and we're talking about the land where the Bayside Park will be, but it's also on both sides of, of Main Street, on both lagoons, and the, and the land, it's all in there. And my question, we, we talked about this three, four months ago, Joe, you had an objection to the agreement, has it been resolved?
Well, Gail and I have talked once since then, since this came up on the agenda last week, but I'll, she added one thing to it, so it looks presentable, because it went from like 13 pages to three. So there's one other little thing that I was looking at, and I'm sure probably either this week or early next week, I'll be able to sign that, so it's all looking good.
Okay, and, and just for everybody's identification, everything's on the table, including the overhead lines, et cetera, as to how we go forward with this. And we should have a better idea on the 25th, but I don't want to, you know, create anything that's going to, you know, because I know that open spaces and trails has put their tree planting thing on hold, too, until we get some more plans in.
Any other comments? 8.0, routine business. 8.1, city manager update and report to city council on various items that require no action, including Seabrook boards and commissions, transportation projects, and the city of Seabrook CIP projects.
All right, Mayor and Council, just to reiterate the point, I was going to report on landscaping projects. So we are meeting in the field with Techstat, though it should be a lot more movement, particularly on the corner of Red Bluff and 146, on the landscaping and the green ribbon. Transportation projects, not any movement on what was reported on the Red Bluff to Spencer Project, so they're still anticipating another probably four weeks before crews move in and start the overpass. They'll be looking to do the southbound, excuse me, the northbound lane, I believe, first, and then it will be overall, probably a year that they're going to be working on that overpass. Again, the intersection is still slotted within that year period to also be part of this project from Red Bluff to one, or Red Bluff to Spencer Project. And then we've also been made aware with all of the movement, the Transportation Improvement Plan or the TIP, the Southern Access Road that was talked about with the port agreement that is on the regional transportation plan. So Red Bluff intersection will be hooking up, and it looks like they are actively moving to get the ground-level road moving on the TIP as well. So the old 146 project, that is also going to be part of this, so the enlargement and improvement of the intersection at Red Bluff and 146 will also see from two lanes to four lanes for Techstat to take old 146 and expand that out. So we will be probably three to four years seeing activity at the Red Bluff intersection with all those components. So a lot of things are still moving in that area. Not a lot to report, we're still doing some punch list on wastewater treatment plant and kicking off some of our other CIP projects. Our boards and commissions will have our EDC meeting next week, and we will not plan on having any planning and zoning at this time for this month, and we'll move on to the next one. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a couple. So I noticed the box at the Bay Area Veterans Memorial, it just like disintegrated. I knew that was probably going to happen soon. I talked to one of the guys out there, and he kind of told me a little bit, but what else do you know?
So internally, staff's looking at it, it is a mess. We're getting quotes currently right now, and Brian, you can interrupt me if you need to. But we're getting quotes right now to look at a possible new solution that maybe we can take some stuff underground, but we don't have all the quotes back yet. So Brian and his team are working on that right now.
Perfect. And by the way, tell your guys the memorial looks great, they've been doing a good job, looks great. And then the last one, again, I drove, golly, was it Saturday? No, it wasn't Saturday. It was, I think it was Sunday night. I drove Main Street all the way to Alago. So Main Street, cross 146 to NASA 1. Again, I bring this up because of Brenda, 59 streetlights out. So you were, we were waiting on a park or something like that. Did that ever come in from Center Point? Oh, wow. Center Point's slow.
Yeah, we continuously have to make streetlight outage reports through their, through their web app. No update.
Okay, well, it just, it's, there's sections that it gets real dark, so that's why. And people besides Brenda have told me, hey, it just doesn't look good, so. Oh, and then one last thing, the corner of the, the feeder of 146 and Meyer across from the McDonald's, just, it doesn't look good. You know, all that riprap, just, you know, I don't know who's supposed to take care of, just doesn't look good, anyway.
Well, kudos again, Public Works. I think we've pretty much identified that it's the Harris County contractor that did the sidewalk project down Meyer. So Brian is, I think, every other day, working with the county. Their county intern is working with the contractor, but again, they're moving slow, so we're staying after it, hopefully we'll get that cleaned up sooner. And there's any other report on that? Okay.
I don't know if this needs to be a discussion item, but is there a way we can put together some sort of town hall for the residents to discuss specifically the port and their future plans? Or do I need, is that something?
Yeah. You mean, the highway project, we'd have to get Techstat involved somehow. We'll have to see. I mean, Techstat holds the answers.
Jordan probably wants to come, I can tell.
Yeah. Jordan might have a little bit of pull with them, but I don't, anyway. Yeah, I, I see no problem with doing that.
Okay, I think that would, that would be impactful for the residents.
Okay.
To do that, tie some of the other topics on there, to provide residency opportunity to learn about all the details of what's going on with not just that, but the pier and everything else, and do it all at once.
Definitely.
Yes, that's a, that's smart.
Great idea.
That's what the people are asking.
For sure.
I thought that's what these meetings are for. Anyway.
Established future meetings.
Yeah. 8.2, established future meeting dates and agenda items.
That's me.
Yeah, yeah, wake up.
Mayor and Council, your next meeting is scheduled for March 18 at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to add signage for the old Seabrook District, or the historic district, some type of signage. I mean, even it has to be kind of temporary for now, just to get some, you know, this is kind of what we talked about, what would hurt these businesses, you know, back in...
Yep, Joe, let's, we'll put it on a future agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Do we hear a motion?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
8:24.